Good afternoon, I'd like to call the regular June meeting of the Kent City Kansas Community College Board Trustees to order and ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. I've asked Peggy if she would call the roll, please.
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Trustee Rydenball.
Here.
Trustee Daniels.
Here.
Trustee Flunder.
Here.
Trustee Maddox.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Townsend.
President. All right, thank you Peggy. Need a motion to approve the agenda or the amendment thereof?
Mr. Chairman, I have an amendment. The Board has received a proposal regarding the merging of the endow- creating of an endowment foundation and we have some bylaws. I would put that on the agenda for consideration. So I make that motion as an amendment to the agenda.
Okay, so we already had one amendment to the agenda here that you all should note in your electronic version at least, so we're going to add this amendment to the amendment. We had a motion from Trustee Townsend, is that a friendly?
Yes.
Amendment to the, a motion for you, Trustee Townsend?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion?
Yes.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. Agenda item four, approval of the minutes of the May 13th, 2014 Board of Trustees meeting.
Move approval?
Second.
All right, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries and now need a motion for approval of the minutes of the June 9th special meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. All right, that brings us to agenda item number five. Audience to patrons and petitioners, I believe we may have a few people here that wish to address the Board. If you do, we would ask you to move to the podium and state your name and address for the record and we'll give you an opportunity to speak. Are there any patrons that wish to address the Board?
I must admit, I'm quite, I'm at a disadvantage. I have tonight as terribly, I virtually have heard nothing since I walked in here.
Okay, do you-
I do have something to say, I have signed up.
Okay, would you please go to the podium?
Yes.
And state your name and address for the record?
Name and address?
Yes.
Yes. Board members, my name is John Nielsen, I live at 2303 North 74th Street, virtually lifelong resident, Windott County homeowner, taxpayer. Would you like me to start?
Yes, please.
I'm aware I have about five minutes, I guess. I have been walking out here since 1985, virtually every day. Have enjoyed it, when I started walking out here, the atmosphere was quite friendly, quite public oriented as far as being congenial from the security people, the ones that we would come in contact with the most in order to express different things. This went on for quite a little while, I got to know many of them personally, as with all jobs, many had left. They would stop by various times after that, in the 90s, going back a little ways, they would stop and say hello, maybe walk with me awhile. I spent most of my time on the track, as of recently, much more so with my health condition and also creating the ringing, creating some nausea thereby also expressing some vertigo problems, so I don't like falling on the cement, I've done that too many times out there. The track is much softer, I don't get hurt as bad. Anyway, the attitude towards the public changed with the changing in the security. Greg was here a little bit ago. I'd learned from previous employees and it was very easy to tell that the public really was not welcome, as they may have been welcome as far as, well if you want to stay on the sidewalk, if you want to hurry up and get out of here, we'll tolerate you, but as far as any, the congenial atmosphere, it was very evident on a daily basis that that was changing. And I learned from the ex-employees that that was basically why it was, it was more or less a policy that was adapted. It was closed for a great deal of time when the complex was being renovated and of course that was putting a new track down, you can't have people walking on that, it would have been somewhat of a danger, I suppose. That was completed six, nine months with a sign still hanging on the outside, track closed under construction, there was no construction going on for six, nine months, almost a year, we were still prohibited. After complaining on that, it was reopened and nothing had changed on that, I mean it was just simply the same track as ever. Last, and it then remained open until last, a week ago, today, when the sports team left, then I came back as I always do in the evening, late night and early night usually, to finish walking till they close and at 11:30. I noticed the sign on their complex closed, so I questioned it with a night supervisor, he said it was because we threw trash all over the track and the area. I told him that was nonsense, we did not do that. Sports teams come, leave water bottles such as you all have and maybe a sock, maybe a pair of shoes, tissue they used might be left on the track, around the track in the area where they sit, soccer games, track meets, that buildup not really ever being taken care of and then of course blame it on the walkers, it's an easy way to close the track, blame them for the trash. Well, it was never picked up in the first place, we never left it in the first place, that was very simple. And also I have to question, with four, five security people out here, three and four driving around in vans, trucks, pickups, they could not see something, I see a sign up there now, rules violation, if there is a rules violation, they would almost be admitting that they are doing their job if there is a rules violation and they don't prevent it from happening. So anyway, I would think one could easily, very easily be assigned to just simply watching the track, he could watch, they could do that in one hour shifts, two hour shifts, whatever they wish. One watched the sidewalk, one watched the track, the other two, they can watch the ducks by the duck pond like they do quite often if they wish. My main complaint, I guess would be in speaking with many that walk out here, I've known my virtually hundreds of people in the past 30 years and the number has dwindled, so for getting rid of the public is the goal, to a certain degree they've accomplished it, there hasn't been any goodwill promoted along with it. I feel as taxpayers, paying our taxes, homeowners, residents of Windott County, I think everyone who, and all here I would guess are taxpayers, why go to the grocery store, get your statements in the mail, everyone knows the tax system, there's a very, very large budget out here with a large security force. I think we are entitled to an open area where we are able to say hello to one another and enjoy our friends and I think we deserve the utmost in courtesy and treatment. Going public with some of the things that I have gone public with, closed bathrooms, no places to get a drink of water at the top or at the bottom, anywhere for the walkers, all the water faucets turned off. I think the waste has been excessive out here, my name has been slandered in the past for and currently for every time I have spoken out, which another matter to deal with.
Mr. Nielsen, I hate to cut you off, I hate, I hate to cut you off at this point, but you're at about six and a half minutes now, so could I ask you, I'm under hearing everything you're saying, understanding, could, could you sort of wrap it up? Are you at a point where you could wrap it up for us?
I have to come closer if I want to, if I want to hear the question or whatever it was.
You're at approaching seven minutes, you're approaching seven minutes?
I am very sorry, I know this-
And so, could I ask you to sort of wrap it up, we may have others that want to speak.
I take it you would like for me to sit down?
I'd like to ask you-
No, I want, I would like for you to wrap up your comments if you could bring your comments to a conclusion. Could you wrap up or close your comments for us, please?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you, I'll give you a little time for that.
Thank you. I would like to state in no uncertain terms, the track should be open to the public, the public should be free to walk there, they should be treated with the utmost courtesy and dignity out here. We support the place, our taxes pay for it, we are not getting what we deserve. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank, thank you, Mr. Nielsen. But just a minute, Trustee Flunder. Before we offer any comments or anything, do we have other patrons that would like to address on the, on this issue or another, or, is it on this issue or another? Okay, could I ask you to hold just, just for a second? The President has prepared some comments and so we want, I want to give her an opportunity to share those comments in response and the Board of Trustees is keenly aware of this situation, this issue. I have talked to a number of patrons myself and we are working on, on the issue. That being said, I'm going to give Dr. Gibbons an opportunity to read her statement, I have a few words and then we'll hear from Trustee Flunder. So, Dr. Gibbons?
Trustee Ash, I see our responsibility as twofold. First, to assure that one of the most expensive assets Kansas City Kansas Community College owns remains in excellent condition for the sports events it was built to host. Second, to make the track available to the faithful Windott County walkers who are seeking a safe and easily accessible, close to home track to maintain and improve their health. There has been abuse of the track and hostile content, comments made by folks who are approached regarding their abuse. For the walkers who have used the track for years, we do not believe that they are the abusers. However, we will have to make changes. We are in discussion and by the July Board meeting, the track will be open to the community again, which will make them happy and we will have controls in place that will make the KC KCC administration and Board very secure in the knowledge that the track is being, being secured and the walkers have access again.
All right, Trustee Flunder?
Yes, I was one of them that suggested we close it and the reason being that I have caught four ladies on that track with those strollers. It's a sign out there and how they put those strollers over the top and can't get them back on this side, I have not figured out, but people do not take care of other people's property the way they should take care of it. Yes, it is, it's, everybody got to suffer because of a few. I personally come through here on Sundays, on the weekends, just to see if I see anybody. And one time they called the police on me, so I know that, because I was like, lady, you got that stroller over there in a nice nasty way, so you get it back on this side. It was gum on the track, that track costs millions of dollars and I do not think that the other public of the Windott County want it tore up, I know I don't, because I was the one who was fussing the longest about the tracks. So we need to look at everybody and I know when a certain few mess it up for everybody else, but that's what, with everything that we do, somebody going to find a way to screw it up. But I, I, I know the feeling, my sisters and them all walk out here, I don't walk out here, I don't walk, but I have a lot of people that do walk out here and I am just appalled at the number of persons who throw things down. Now maybe it's not the old walkers, I don't know who they are. That lady and I got into, I mean I was ready to jump on her and she was really ready to jump on me the last time. If it hadn't been for Ruby Jones in the car with me, I probably would have jumped on, because I, I don't have good sense when I get angry. But we need to make sure, we don't want no gum on that soccer field and we don't want no strollers on that soccer field. If you go to other places, it's more, they got signs, they got a list of things. Go out to Johnson County and see how many signs they got up to tell you what you can't have on there.
Okay, are there other trustees which should speak to the issue? Trustee Rios?
I'm glad that the gentleman has brought the issue forward to us, I appreciate public coming out and making comment that an open session, I have had a number of residents contact me about the closure, but I feel that the President and her remarks has addressed the issue adequately. I understand that trying to come to a manageable solution where we will be able to reopen the track and allow the taxpayers who certainly did assist in the pain for the facilities to be able to utilize those, but once it is reopened, I do hope that rather than our security force having to enforce the rules, that the patrons would actually police themselves and be good citizens and caretakers of that of which you have helped build for the good of the community, to good of this school. I am concerned, and I did not hear in the President's remarks, so if someone could address his other, I've, I heard two, two concerns. One was about the track closure and one was about the treatment of the patrons being addressed in a cursory manner or something to that effect, so that now had not been brought to my attention earlier, but-
It has not been brought to my attention before, that's the first time I've heard that.
Oh, okay, well, so his concern though, if the other people heard the same thing I did, was a second concern about the treatment and so I would certainly hope that that would be addressed and then you can let us know how that comes up.
Okay. Other trustees? Trustee Townsend?
I wanted to question the President about the date that you want to reopen on the track, what date would it be?
I don't know if we have a-
We don't have a-
-date specific for reopening it at this point, but we are looking at the alternatives and I believe we will get to an acceptable solution.
A good, a good-
Certainly before the, certainly before this Board convenes next month.
Right.
I'd just like to make a suggestion, maybe the 92 when the coaches are here on campus, because they can, they, the coaches could help police it as well as the other, as well as the security people, but when they leave, it need to be locked back up.
Okay, any other trustees?
I think this Board puts that facility out there for two reasons Dr. Gibbons mentioned. One was for our athletic programs which are important to us and our students and two was for the community and this Board has been supportive in community uses of that, of all of our facilities and we let the community use our facilities a great deal. As Dr. Gibbons said, it is a fine line, it is a very valuable piece of real estate and equipment for this community, we have an obligation to make sure that we take care of that for this community, but at the same time, I think the Board is very, very willing to do everything we can to let the community use that facility within reasonable limits that keeps it safe and keeps it in good condition. So I appreciate Mr. Nielsen coming today and bringing it to our attention. I think we'll look forward to Dr. Gibbons' response and I'm sure we'll come up with a way to satisfy, maybe not particularly, especially satisfy every single person, but I think we'll be able to satisfy most people using that facility, so we'll look forward to see what we hear in July.
Okay, I guess I'll wrap it up by saying the Board is committed to finding an acceptable solution for this. I want to thank Mr. Nielsen as well as the other patrons that have stepped forward and contacted the President's office or reached out to a trustee, and I spoke with Ms. Deborah Hernandez at length. Some of the things that we have done, we've looked at some of the other facilities in our area that are comparable or similar to ours, we've looked at what their policies are for the USD facilities, all of those are taxpayer funded facilities as well and all of them have specific rules and guidelines and in some cases hours when the facility is closed to the public, to the taxpayers. I would only say and echo a little bit about what Dr. Daniels said, is that the entire totality of the facilities of the Kansas City Kansas Community College in some form or fashion or manner are open to the public. We rent our buildings out, we let groups use our buildings as an in-kind contribution, we host lots of events for the community here and so on and so forth and with all of those come guidelines, rules and regulations for use. We do not leave these buildings open 24 hours a day, seven days a week for anybody just to come in here anytime and do whatever they want to do. And so I don't think it's prudent or reasonable to think that we would do the same thing with the softball field or the track or the tennis courts or the gym or the baseball field. And so we are committed to finding an acceptable solution here. I believe we'll have to look at all of the alternatives that are available to us. Comments were made regarding campus police, if we're going to station a campus police officer there, there's a cost to that.
Big cost.
And that means something else is not going to be covered by campus police during the time we've stationed a campus police officer. It's been suggested that the coaches help monitor, I know the coaches do help monitor the use of the facility and the coaches have to deal with a lot of the offenders. And as Dr. Gibbons pointed out, oftentimes that contact is very negative, not necessarily because of our coach or our staff member, but in response, you know, to the public. So we have one head soccer coach and two part-time soccer coaches and so how much can we expect them to do on top of coaching the soccer team, managing the student athletes in their study halls and their academic requirements and so on and so forth, recruit, fundraise to help pay for the programs and so on and so forth. So there are alternatives available to us, there is a cost for all of those alternatives and it will be the job of the President and her senior administration as well as this Board to figure out what that is. However, I want to assure the community that we have heard you, we understand the situation and we are committed, as Dr. Daniels and Dr. Gibbons both stated, we're committing to reaching an acceptable solution that preserves and protects the investment that the taxpayers have made and yet allows an acceptable level of use for the facility by the public in addition to what the needs are for the college. So, once again, thank you to everybody for coming forward on this issue and you can expect to hear more from us on it as we move forward.
Trustee Ash, can I just make one quick statement?
No, we're late, it's too late, we're moving on. No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
It just occurred to me, you know how-
And then we're moving on to Mr. Bland, okay? All right.
I did want to add that, you know, with this new facility and the quality of this facility, it has now become an income generating aspect to the college-
That's right.
-because of the quality and the maintenance of that and I think we'll see more of that and I think we are all as trustees happy about that and I think in turn, once the community sees that, they will be happy as well.
Yes, that's a good point Kathy, thank you. All right, thank you everyone, appreciate your patience as we work through it. Mr. Bland, could you please take the podium, state your name and address for us? And thank you for your patience.
I did that just to you.
I am Merle Bland, I live at 8311 Garfield Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas, 66112. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address the Board. First of all, I want to thank the trustees for all of the excellent cooperation that has been afforded Business West since its inception. The first organizational meeting of Business West was held in the summer of 1985 at the Conference Center. Since then, Business West and the Community College have enjoyed an excellent relationship, cooperating with various programs that benefit the larger business community. A project that Business West recently launched is raising money for a Community College Scholarship Fund. Business West also appreciates the support the Community College has shown for the State Avenue Corridor Community Improvement District. Business West is promoting and has over the years and continues to promote residential development. Two market rate apartment complexes developed primarily to serve Cerner employees will provide an excellent marketing opportunity for homeownership in Windott County. Our concern however is the tax rate. Windott County property taxes when compared with its neighbors in Baser, Parkville or Western Shawnee is about 30 mils more expensive. During the life of a mortgage of a $265,000 home, that could mean as much as $30,000 more in mortgage payments. It will be extremely important for the trustees to hold the line when it comes to any property tax increase. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from Mr. Bland? Merle, thank you very much, you've once again in a very concise manner encapsulated the issue, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hear you loud and clear.
Okay, agenda item number six, communication. Dr. Gibbons?
I have one communication from KC Banks. KC Banks is an acronym for Kansas City Building and Alliance for New Careers in STEM. It offers two free academic support programs, one for students majoring in the STEM field, science, technology, engineering and math. Both programs, STEM scholars and veterans in STEM provide assistance with navigating a path through college, stipends, research incentives and career building opportunities. The programs are designed to help students earn their degrees and find employment in the STEM fields. Two KC KCC employees are honorees for the KC blank programs. Joseph Gracella is a public service librarian and a reference librarian here at KCK's library. Joseph is also a veteran who served from 1972 to 1992. When he left the armed services, he was an instructor at the United States Army Command and General Staff College. Joseph has a degree in library science from Emporia State University, he has been a great champion of KC Banks. He has supported events held at Emporia State, he has referred numerous students to KC Banks. He helps plan Veterans Day events each year here at KC KCC. He also mentors student veterans at KC KCC. Joseph is appreciated by student- Joseph is appreciated by student veterans at KCKCC because he supports them academically and refers them to resources when their needs stretch beyond academics. The second person is Carolyn McCain. She is executive director and is responsible for the total operation of KCKCC Leavenworth Center. This encompasses designing class schedules, coordinating early enrollment, payment day, and regular enrollment, assigning faculty, procuring equipment, and with the assistance of the landlord, building management. She represents the college to the public at college fairs, employment fairs, and community events. The college program offered at Fort Leavenworth is also under her supervision. So, as you surmise, when we were originally forming a core leadership team for KC Banks, she was an important person to get to know. She has been a loyal team player and a committed advocate for student veterans. The 2014 KC Banks honorees are Joseph Gracella and Carolyn McCain. Please stand and come to the podium. We recognize you.
Set all the way across the room there. Thank you, Dr. Gibbons, and I don't know, Joe, if you had wanted to say a few words first?
Well, I'd like to thank President Gibbons for the nice words that she said about us, and I brought in a little award that we were presented to share and show to the members of the board, if I could do that, that's the time. And I just ask that the board always consider our veterans when they're dealing with the members of the Kansas City Kansas Community College. Thank you.
And I quickly contacted my colleagues at KC Banks and got some information, because I know you all like to know statistics and how our involvement in something has affected KC KCC. KC Banks was funded through a National Science Foundation grant that is administered through University of Missouri Kansas City Institute for Human Development. So, it's kind of the best way to be involved with a grant. You get all the benefits and not the headaches of administering the grant program. It actually started in October of 2009, since, and it's a partnership that includes, besides UMKC, Kansas City Kansas Community College, and then also Metropolitan Community College. Also, as partners, are employers and employment resources to help connect the students that are participating in KC Banks programs with those employers. The grant focuses on attracting veterans and students with disabilities into STEM fields. Since 2010, 182 students have participated in KC Banks programs. These programs included academic coaching, STEM research opportunities, and STEM career exploration opportunities, including internships and also service learning. KC Banks students attend eight different college campuses. KC KCC students are 11% of the program, which totaled 12 students, of which nine of those were veterans in STEM, and three were designated as STEM scholars, which are the students with disabilities that are participating. They even sent some quotes that they had collected from student participants, and I'll share a few of those with you now. "It is tough and lonely to start school at a later age. STEM helped make that easier." Another student says, "This program is a must for first-time college students. I believe programs like this help. Also, it is fun. Every time you go there is something exciting going on, like during the math class, there might be pizza, or networking games and giveaways. It's always about the food." And then, finally, "Impressive program. I have encouraged other veteran friends to participate. I like the frequent communication and clear goals." In addition to serving students, KC Banks also provided programs for faculty, staff, and administrators. Forty-six faculty, staff, and administration members from Kansas City Kansas Community College also participated in KC Banks programs. These included workshops that were held at each partner college, and included such things as teaching in an anxious world, taming textbooks, write-to-learn, smart pens, and the STEM classroom, and participants of that workshop actually got a smart pen, principles of universal design for learning, and all students learn. The grant is now ending, not because of anything we did or did not do, or lack of success. It's ending because the National Science Foundation has changed its direction in funding. Dr. Alexis Petrie, who's with UMKC Institute of Human Development, does plan, however, to keep the coalition going, and she is currently assembling the data and plans to continue the partnership. She is also developing free online workshops for veterans, supportive college personnel, and an app for academic coaching. So, I guess in closing, I would channel Paul Harvey, and I would say, stay tuned for more from KC Banks. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Okay, I'm showing now that we're going to hear from Chief Snyder on ALICE training? Or has that been amended? No? We are? Okay. Chief Snyder is here.
And Deputy Chief Jason Severs.
All right.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
One of the hot topics on college campuses these days are active shooter or armed intruders on campus. A lot of people want to know, what do we do if that would happen? Can everybody hear? If that would happen on our campus? Back in December, I sent four members of my department, Deputy Chief Jason Severs, Sergeant Scott Bailey, Sergeant John Davis, and Officer Cameron Roland, to what's called ALICE training. ALICE is designed to give a person or group of people who may find themselves in a violent, life-threatening situation, some mental and physical tools that could play a vital role in their survival. So, these four personnel completed the training. They were certified as instructors to teach this program. In March of this year, we launched this training during President Gibbons' spring retreat. We presented this material to deans and directors and vice presidents during this The feedback tended to imply that it was an overwhelming success. Since that time, we have put on three other training sessions, and we have several more that are scheduled during July and August. And Dr. Gibbons has already asked me to put this training on again for the faculty orientation when they come back in August, as well as the adjunct faculty presentation later on that night, the same day. So, we have numerous training sessions scheduled. And before we start a video that we shot, this training is about an hour and a half, maybe two hours, depending on input, you know, from the people that we're giving it to. One of the things we did was, we put together, using Michael Kimbrough and his staff down in Media Services, we utilized Dr. Charlie Leader in the Theater Department and his students, Dr. Mike Vitale, and members of our department, and put together about an eight-minute video that, when it was said and done, it was riveting. It kind of had a wow factor to it. But we used that video during our PowerPoint presentation that we give. The people at ALICE were so impressed when they saw the video that they put it immediately on their website, and it was one of their showcase videos, because it had, nobody had ever put together a video that came from a shooter's perspective, as well as a bystander's perspective. So, it was well put together. It was a great example of collaboration, you know, campus-wide. We had faculty, we had staff, we had administration, along with campus police putting this together. So, we want to show this to you. It'll give you a brief introduction as to what this program is and what it can do for not only the college community here on campus, but outside of campus, in your home life. You know, when you're out at the shopping mall, wherever, it gives you options, instead of just sitting there being frozen, waiting for the shooter to do something, it gives you options. So, if we could start the video.
At least 14 dead, 50 injured. A lot of those injuries are severe.
Call 911. What's the location of the emergency?
Sandy Hook School. I think there's somebody shooting in here. Sandy Hook School.
Twenty-two people killed in two separate shootings on the campus this morning. More than 20 people are said to be injured. It is said by all involved to be the work of a lone gunman. No idea.
Hello, I'm Mike Vitale, Vice President for Academic Affairs and Student Services at Kansas City Kansas Community College. During the Columbine shooting, students who were in the library were instructed to hide beneath desks, even though there was an additional door they could have exited through to avoid the shooters. This passive-response strategy was also used during the Virginia Tech and Sandy Hook shootings, and tragically, we know the results of those decisions. Twenty-five years of mass shooting events have yielded a national average of five to six minutes for the response time of law enforcement to an active shooter scene. Five to six minutes can be the difference between life and death. In light of recent events, it is necessary to review how to react should you encounter an active shooter. ALICE, A-L-I-C-E, the acronym for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate, is based on the premise that information, authorization, and proactive training are the key to surviving Should you notice anyone suspicious, contact KCKCC Campus Police at 913-288-7636. Provide a description, such as clothing, weight, height, or weapon, and the suspect's Another option to contact KCKCC Police is to use one of the campus outside emergency phones. This will connect you directly with the campus police dispatch. Once alert is received, a law enforcement team starts to respond and will direct officers to the scene, and alerting the campus by text, email, and intercom.
Take all appropriate safety actions at this time.
Getting correct information is crucial to your survival in a crisis situation.
Hey, there's a shooter on campus. We all need to leave. Let's go, come on.
This information will give you the knowledge to make the right decisions about If you receive an alert while in a classroom or office, and your only option is to stay at your location because the shooter is nearby, you should close and lock your doors immediately. If your doors do not lock, you should attempt to barricade the door using chairs or desks in the room. Another option is to wrap a belt or cord around the door handle to keep it shut if the door opens outward.
I got a gun. Get it.
Hitting a moving target possesses a challenge. If the shooter does enter the classroom, you want to make it difficult for the shooter to open fire on stationary targets. Spreading out, movement, and distractions are important if the shooter does enter the classroom. Your response to a shooter close by or in a room may include you evacuating as soon The best-case scenario is for you to be able to exit the room as soon as possible to escape a shooter.
Hey, there's a shooter on campus. We have to leave. Let's go, come on. Great.
Take a moment to review your classrooms and observe ways to exit the room in the event of an emergency. If there's only one door, observe windows. If the room is above ground, is there a ledge or location outside you can safely hide until help arrives? Disrupting the ability of the shooter to use his weapon is the main goal of this step. If the shooter enters the classroom and escape is not possible, everyone should start throwing objects such as books, backpacks, purses, laptops, chairs, all at the head of the shooter, then either head for the exit or subdue the shooter. If you control the head, you control the body. But you have to immobilize the shooter first by having one person attack each of the arms and legs, then force the shooter to the ground while another person grabs his head. If the weapon comes free, grab it and place it in a trash can away from the struggle. Call the police while keeping the shooter on the ground. Once law enforcement arrives, they'll be looking for someone with a weapon, and you do not want to be holding it upon their arrival. We believe students and staff may have a greater opportunity to avoid injury or death by following these steps. Knowing the philosophy of the ALICE program and using it when necessary may increase your chances of survival when confronted by an active shooter. Review this video often on the college website. Let's work to make Kansas City Kansas Community College a safe and reliable place to work, study, and enjoy.
You know, that kind of said a lot, just in about eight or nine minutes. It covered, it was a good summary of what the training is. We just put this training on Thursday for Enrollment Management Division as part of their retreat. And I've never been through training before, and, you know, being on the opposite side instead of receiving it, but to see everybody just so enthralled, so locked on, so engaged in the training, and it really hits home. Everybody, they walked away from it, and like I said, we've given probably four presentations already, and it had the wow factor. It's something that a lot of people don't think about. Oh, it's never going to happen here. It's not going to happen to me. But the big thing is, you have to think about it, at least be in the back of your mind, instead of having the oh factor, you know, when it does happen. If you thought about it a little bit, you'll at least have an idea, or at least recognize what options that you might have, instead of just hunkered down someplace. And the shooter doesn't have to be very accurate. If you're just sitting there in a ball, that's a pretty easy target to hit. So, whether you're capable of countering, you might be capable of informing, you might be capable of barricading. You don't have to be perfect in all five, but at least if you're doing one out of the five, you're doing more than what you would have been doing in the traditional, just stay there and wait and see what happens. So, I think that's one of the most effective parts of this training, is it empowers you. You know, it makes you kind of look at yourself, and what can I do, what can I not do? And then, you can operate from there with those parameters. Does anybody have any questions?
Hearing none, Chief Snyder. Want to thank you for, it was a wonderful presentation, Michael, and everyone that, you know, put the video together. It's fantastic. It's outstanding. I know everybody's, this is the hottest topic around on campuses throughout the nation, and it's going to heat up a little more here in Kansas with July 1 coming and the new laws with respect to open carry, which I'm sure we need to, you know, be sure we're ready for that as well. And to be clear, we don't have to allow open carry on our campus, so we, you know, we can prohibit that. We have to figure out how we're going to do it, and how we're going to monitor it, and how we're going to police it, you know, and how we're going to deal with those people that think they can. So, this is great. So this is great for the staff, the rest of the staff to get it. First day back is very, very timely, and I'm sure will be very welcome. So congratulations to you and your staff.
Thank you.
Outstanding. Okay, on the amendment to the agenda, I see that we're to hear from Dr. Long now, is that correct? All right. Dr. Long, if you please, thank you.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Of all the days for me to forget my glasses, I forgot them today. So you're, well, we're not, I'm not sure we have the same prescription, so you're all kind of a blur, but if you have questions during my presentation, I'd be happy to answer them. You know, first and foremost, when you look at the ALICE training and some of the things that I'm going to talk about, I think we really have a united team at the college in terms of making this a safe environment, a safe educational environment, and also a place that focuses on student success. Because the vast majority of the students here are earnest students, they want to get a good education, and we want to make sure that they, again, have a safe environment, and one that is free of harassment, discrimination, things of that nature. So I'm going to talk about two things, and I'll try to, as everyone says, make it brief. The first is some recent developments in Title IX. And Title IX is a civil rights act that prohibits discrimination on the basis of gender. But recently, as recent as four months ago, President Obama signed a bill that asked for colleges and universities to step up their enforcement and their procedures related to sexual harassment and sexual violence related to Title IX. The reality is, is that it does happen. It happens on every campus, and again, what we want to do is everything possible so that our environment is as safe and free of harassment as possible. What does the law say? Basically, again, it prohibits discrimination on the basis of gender in all schools that are subject to Title IX, which essentially is every state school. If they are found to not meet the compliance mandates, because it is a federal law, could potentially lose all federal funds. Now, that's not a scare tactic, because we're a very responsible institution, and I don't think that would happen. But, but when you look at federal financial aid and the potential loss of that, that would be a pretty significant hardship for, for any institution. As I mentioned, the White House Task Force was brought together to deal with sexual assault, sexual harassment, and sexual violence. And based on the statistics, that one in seven women are, become victims of sexual assault, President Obama put this task force together because he felt that this was an important issue. What is sexual harassment? It's conduct involving unwelcome sexual advances, requests for sexual favors, and verbal or physical conduct of a sexual nature. This is where my eyesight's really going to be. But when you get specifically into sexual harassment, it's again, unwanted sexual activity, derogatory comments of a sexual nature, suggestive gestures, verbal comments about a person's body, unwelcome touching, such as repeatedly hugging or putting arms around another person, unwelcome behavior that is repeated and pervasive. And we'll get to that in a little bit, but sometimes it's just not that someone experiences one act of sexual harassment, but it's repeated over time, that a student will, over a series of weeks or months, or an employee over a series of weeks or months will experience harassing behavior to the point that it, that they feel that their environment is hostile. What's hostile environment? I just talked about that. It could be a single incident where a, an instructor indicates to a student that in exchange for a, an A, they have to be willing to have intimate relations with that student. Or it could be a series of ongoing behaviors against a student that is sexual in nature that makes that student feel uncomfortable. What's sexual violence? Oftentimes, we refer to that as rape, but it's become, the government, federal government has really broken that down into sexual assault, sexual battery, abuse, intimate partner violence, which used to be called date rape, and sexual coercion. So again, the Office of Civil Rights is getting very, very specific about this, and very specific about the obligations of institutions to take some type of appropriate action. The key questions, what should a member of the campus community do if they feel they've been victimized by sexual harassment or sexual violence? We all know that, that when someone is victimized, they're hesitant to come forward. Sometimes there's stigmas involved with that. Sometimes they don't want to relive the victimization. So as an institution, we need to do all that we can to encourage victims to feel like this is a safe place, and they can go to people who will support them, and then whatever decision they make possibly work through our law enforcement, who are very supportive, and other agencies. What's the first step? A student can always report misconduct, and part of what the responsibility of the OCR is, that we have training. It's just like the ALICE training. We have to have certain people that are considered to be responsible employees, people that know the ins and outs of working with a victim, and giving them the control in their lives, and helping them be able to give us a good report. And again, a lot of this involves, involves training, specialized roles that people play in, in trying to react appropriately to reports of sexual harassment or sexual violence.
John, can I ask a question? Me. In a school situation, is every employee considered a responsible employee? Or how is that, how is that defined? I mean, that's a question for Daryl, too.
I don't think that, that, I don't think that that's the legal definition, but the college is often asks all employees, and part of your policy to report it if they see it, especially those that are in a supervisory capacity, or those who you've identified as being obligated to do it because of their position within management.
But isn't every employee...
I think they have a moral obligation to do that. To say it's a legal obligation stretches it just a bit.
Okay.
And I don't know that your policy says you must report everything you see. What you say is you must reason, you must make a reasonable response to the things that you see. But no, I wouldn't say that every employee is obligated to report what they think is sexual...
Or is it, is the college responsible to train every employee around?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Part of this is, is again, there are specific individuals, and we'll talk about the Title IX Coordinator in a minute, that have specified duties. Having said that, with, as the awareness of the college increases, then the likelihood that all of us will see the, the responsibility of going to someone who has that specialized training in reporting and talking to them. And again, whether or not it's completely a legal obligation that everyone does that, again, it speaks to the type of community we want to have here at the college. Our Title IX Coordinator is Leota Marks, and Leota's been involved in this. I'm just, I'm still the new, I'll probably be new here until I reach 10 years, but I've been here six months. And Leota's been working very hard on coordinating some of the new Title IX efforts, and the Title IX Coordinator is kind of like the orchestra leader. They are the person that works with all the folks in the different designations to make sure that if someone is victimized by sexual harassment or sexual violence, that they receive help. Their responsibilities of the Title IX Coordinator are significant. They need to be a specialist in the law, they need to be able to provide ongoing training, they need to be highly visible, they need to make sure that the campus has information on the web, hard copy, posters, flyers, that talk about what do you do if you've been victimized? Are there other campus individuals who the college designates as Title IX coordinators? We have three deputy Title IX coordinators, and that's just to serve in that capacity if Leota isn't available. And Kim Morgan, who is our Student Health Services Coordinator, is a deputy, as well as Tony Tompkins, our Director of Athletics, and Jason Severs, who was up here to talk to us about ALICE training. We think we've got a really, really good group. Can it make a confidential report? Yes. Although, from the purposes of if the victim decides to go forward and press criminal charges, it's beneficial to have an actual report. Having said that, the Office of Civil Rights recognizes that victims oftentimes feel that they're being revictimized by having to go through processes. So again, while it's encouraged, we try to recognize that, that victimization is, is the type of situation that they should feel that they're in control of their own lives. And if they choose not to report, then at least when we're doing the investigation, if we see a pattern, if we see a pattern of, of certain situations happening in one building of a residence hall over and over, then at least that helps us work with law enforcement to identify a possible perpetrator. If you're a victim of sexual harassment or sexual violence, will you be protected? Absolutely. It's our obligation and our requirement by law to protect victims, to make sure that they are not subject to any type of retaliation. And if they feel that entering this campus puts them in danger because they, they might see the alleged perpetrator on campus, working with Chief Snyder and, and his officers, we can immediately remove a student from campus. Now, everyone deserves due process, so they're allowed to come back and meet with me, I handle all of the campus discipline. But having said that, we don't want someone who possibly has been victimized to come to school the next day and see that student walking down the hallway. What's the outcome of the investigation? Based on the information, the Title IX Coordinator, again, as the orchestra leader, kind of puts together an investigative team, again, works with law enforcement if the individual decides to, to press criminal charges, and the, the victim, if the individual is found to be responsible for sexual assault, sexual harassment, the victim has a legal right to know what action has been taken, either by the college or by law enforcement. A big part of this is letting victims know about resources. Where do they go? Who do they talk to? Who is it safe to go to, to talk to? And obviously, we list, and we're required to list and make, make this very apparent, folks like our own police force, who have training in victims, supporting victims. And offices on campus like the Student and Community Resource Center, who have staff members who are trained in victim support services. And that's a very important skill to have, and it's very necessary that the campus have those services. And then also off-campus. There are some hospitals that have nurses that are qualified, you can see, I can't see it too well, but there are sexual assault nurses that can do the sexual assault kits and the forensics evidence, and they're qualified to do that. And so again, if someone is victimized, they would need to know about what hospital to go to. We have the Kansas City Kansas Police Department, we have the Wyandotte County Sheriff's Department, organizations like MACHSA, which is the Metropolitan Organization to Countersexual Assault. And really, this is a list of six or so of 20 different hotlines, organizations that are there to assist individuals if they have been victimized. I got through that pretty quickly. What I would say is that the Office of Civil Rights, because of the recent White House report, has, has gotten out there, and they're tapping on the doors of many institutions. The front page of The Chronicle, about a month ago, if any of you read that, there were 51 colleges that were cited, or were, investigations were started for alleged violations of the mandates to protect their students from sexual violence and, and sexual harassment. So it's, it's a, it's a key issue, as other key issues are right now. And the purpose of this was just to let you know that we are actively working on it. As Leota started in the fall, I've kind of continued, and we will continue to try to make this the most safe and harassment-free environment as we can. Folks have questions?
Dr. Long?
You gotta ask for permission. I have two questions. One is, what's the number on men? You gave us one out of seven on the women. What's the number on men?
You know, that's a good question, because up until recently, the OCR hasn't identified, other than women, that men, as well as individuals who may be gay, lesbian, or bisexual are folks that can be victimized. So the statistics aren't good on the number of, well, on, on those who aren't women. But it's becoming a pervasive enough of an issue that it can be man, woman, man, man, any type of, of individual can be, can be victimized.
That's what's in his report. Okay, the second thing is, if I do not go to the person here, but go straight to the hospital, and I wait all day to go, then come back and contact the school after it's supposed to be over with, what is my way of, okay, what's my recourse?
If you go to the hospital first?
Yes.
Well, part of our responsibility is to make sure that students are aware of all of the resources and all of the avenues, and what to do if they decide to go to the hospital first. We have to be able to give a victim a right to have control over his or her life. But at the same time, if we do a good job of letting them know that there are specialists that work with victims, it's our hope that they will go to those individuals. And...
But you didn't answer my question, because I said, if I don't, if I am assaulted...
Yes.
Okay, and I don't go to, none of the specialists that you got in this book, but I go to KU Medical or Providence Hospital.
Right.
Okay, and then it comes back to you. It happened in the morning, and I, it's four o'clock in the afternoon when I go to, when I get scared enough to tell my parents that this has happened to me.
Right.
What, what recourse do we have? I guess that's what I want to, how much is the college responsible for if I say it happened here on this campus?
Any student, whether they start off at the hospital or wherever, and have, no matter how much of a gap there is...
Okay.
If they communicate to us, and again, we're, they're specialists they can communicate to, but raising the awareness, if they communicate to anyone, then we work very hard to provide that victim with assistance. Now, an important point to make is that we always talk about compliance. Let's be in compliance with this, compliance with that. What this is really about is the students, making it a safe environment for them. Are we required by law to do this? Yes. So if we do get someone who would come to me, I would then follow the... So if we do get someone who would come to me, I would then follow the established procedures that we have to make sure that the student gets help. Is that a little better?
The college is required to investigate it. I think the answer is yes. So we know about it, we're required to investigate it.
But wouldn't the hospital, or if they choose to go there first, wouldn't they report back to the appropriate person at the college, so the college even knows?
Not if the victim doesn't choose.
Not, that's right.
Or not if the victim doesn't choose.
That's the victim's call.
Okay.
They may not even know if by the police, at the hospital, so it's up to the victim.
Ultimately, the, one of the ways that victims often feel after they've been assaulted is they lose control of their own lives, and so throughout the whole process, we are required to report by law, but they're given the opportunity to once again have control of their lives and make decisions that they think is in their best interest. But part of it is if we offer the resources and the people that are there to help them, then hopefully they'll come to us.
Trustee Townsend, you had a question?
Oh, Doc, Dr. Long, just between you and I, we can talk, is anything happening on the campus at this time, any of this stuff that you've given us this afternoon? Anything going on?
As the main judicial officer, I deal with cases of sexual assault, sexual harassment. I think we do everything that we can to have a safe community and to provide awareness, so I don't know how to compare us to other institutions, but I will tell you that yes, we have situations that we have to deal with where someone is victimized.
And we're taking care of it, and we're working on it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Doc.
Other questions, comments? Okay, Dr. Long, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good presentation.
And are you also covering student code of conduct?
I am.
All right, so you continue to have the microphone.
Yeah, part and parcel of making this a safe community, an academic-focused community, and a deterrent to those individuals, although they're, really, when it comes down to it, very few, but those individuals that violate campus policies ranging from alcohol, to drugs, to sexual harassment, to bullying, to gambling, to any type of weapons. The student code of conduct is basically the document that addresses those behaviors that are not acceptable at Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and what the potential consequences are. I know you didn't get this, but recently, but if you just look at it, you'll see the kinds of things that we consider to be either illegal or inappropriate behavior. And as coordinator of judicial procedures, it's my job to make sure that these students are held accountable. There's sometimes opportunities for them to be educated, everybody makes a mistake, but for certain violations, they are accountable, and that can include suspension, expulsion, criminal prosecution, et cetera. And again, that's not necessarily the focus, but at the same time, we have to feel like that we have very strong disciplinary policies and procedures to make this a safe environment and a successful environment for students. Just one thing to also mention, though, is that every student deserves due process, and for a student who I may choose to suspend, they have actually two to three opportunities for appeal, because if they feel like that I have not investigated it properly, or there's been some procedural matters, they can appeal it to Dr. Vitale, and ultimately, it can be appealed to Dr. Givens. So we want to make sure that we have a very good process, but a very fair process. Any questions?
Do, on the bullying, do anybody sign anything on the bullying? You know, have, like, when they first come to school?
Kind of an anti-bullying statement?
Mm-hmm. Do we have a statement?
No, but I think that's an excellent idea, and that's something I'd really like to look into, because that's, that, my son went through all of his years of school being bullied, and so that's a situation that is very close to me, and I know how damaging that can be for a young person. So I think that's a good suggestion, or for students just to sign.
Should that be added in here on the P?
Yes, it could, absolutely.
Okay.
Do we have a incident review committee that kind of looks at what's been reported over an academic year, and have, you know, look for commonalities, look for making suggestions to policy or procedures and that sort of thing?
Currently, we don't have a specific review committee, but again, part of me coming to the board is to get your suggestions and your ideas. I think we are really trying to step up our process related to student conduct, and part and parcel of that is to have a committee that monitors, that looks at trends, looks at certain behaviors. We have students that will stand up in a classroom and become belligerent with an instructor, and it's usually not an instructor's job to exactly know what to do. So when we start seeing those patterns, then we can provide training to the instructors on how to deal with disruptive students. So again, that's an excellent idea.
How is this distributed to the students? Does every student get a copy of this, or how do students become aware of this and knowledgeable of it?
It will be, of course, available on the web, and we will have it in hard copy available just about every possible location on campus for students to have. When they move into student housing, they receive a copy. I think there is wide distribution of it, both in hard copy and then on the web.
Will there be some kind of, several general statements out to students that this is available and that they're responsible for this, so that they know it's, I mean, there's some notice to the students, if there is a student code of conduct and you're responsible for it, and here's how you can get a copy of it?
Again, I think for us to enhance that would be an excellent idea, to kind of make a statement for students, and again, the vast majority of them here are never involved in any of these kinds of things, and almost for their sake, that there is information that says that we do have a student code of conduct, and we do hold students responsible.
This would also be part of the orientation and our HUDB, the First Year Experience Courses that we offer, they'd be covering this in there and being exposed to it.
Very good.
And Dr. Vinnie, do all of them come to the student orientation?
We're getting closer. We're trying to get as many as they can, yes, ma'am. We're trying to make it as mandatory as possible, but it's still difficult to get them all to get to it.
And also, the exit interviews would be good, too.
But first-year students are supposed to take HUDB, and we do get a very good...
You get a good response off of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Daryl, did you have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, I might also add that it may not be called Trustee Wille's Incident Review Committee, but Dr. Givens has convened her senior leadership to look at what we'll call trends, some of which are risk management, some of which are student safety and staff safety. We've done that a couple of times when there's been the need, and then you have your law enforcement, who you know, keeps the very detailed statistics on the crimes that occur, and so while it may not be Incident Review Committee, committee language, it is an Incident Review Committee function that you have, and my thought is, we can always do better, but the sense is that you do have infrastructure in place that looks at them, and I'm not talking about what Dr. McDowell has done on occasion, as well as your Intercultural Center as well. So there is someone taking a look at trends, and I'll just be quiet on Dr. Givens' comments if she feels the need.
In addition to that, it will be posted on the website.
Yes.
So that students, when they go to the website, one of the first things they will see is student code of conduct, and if they hit that, then they can get all this information. And I think it's also in the calendar book that they get, isn't it a part of that, too?
Yes.
If they buy a college calendar, it's in there also.
One last thing on the last page, four and five, Academic Appeals and Non-Academic Appeals, says, "See grade appeal policy, student grievance procedures policy." Are those board policies that we're talking about there? The grade appeal policy and the student grievance procedures policy, or is that more of an administrative procedure or something, or is it something that the board has actually passed?
You have policies that essentially say that you will comply with applicable law, but the procedures, or what I think this is referring to, and I know that he's worked with our office, and so, because a procedure is a little more nimble and can be changed on the fly, and so you have both, but I believe that that refers to the procedures which go about implementing.
I change out of language, Jonathan, just to make it grade appeal procedure rather than policy, because it makes it sound like it's something the board has passed.
All right, appreciate that.
Okay, this is not for our approval?
Excuse me, the question?
Is this for our approval, or are we going to, he's going to add those other things before this? Or is this, this says revised six...
I thought this was an informational item to keep you up to date, because you asked for this information, and then, I think it was on this end of the table, just to keep informed, when Dr. Long came on, on what was being done, and what I can tell you, that he's not told you, is that what is before you now blends in with your other policies that you have passed over the years, and there was a deliberate attempt to make this consistent with other things that have been hanging out there, drafted on their own, but may not have been consistent. And I know he's worked with Teresa Mata from my office extensively on that, and so the whole point from Dr. Givens' request was to make sure that they're coherent and consistent, which I believe was an issue raised by the trustees before, and so that's what is also not mentioned specifically in here, but what this code of conduct achieves, takes a step towards achieving. Now, Dr. Long, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Can't be quite.
Well done. All right, very good. Thank you, Dr. Long, thank you very much. Long time to be at the podium. It's all good information, though. Well done. Okay, agenda item number eight, Vice President for Academic Affairs, Dr. Vitale.
Okay, you have my report.
Hold it, wait a minute. Whoops, whoops. Before we do that, we need, do you want to, I've got committee reports, so do you want to, do you want to do this? Okay, all right, so do I, I would entertain a motion to accept Dr. Givens' report.
So moved.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, Dr. Vitale, please continue.
Oh, that's fine. You have my report in front of you, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Maybe Dane Marks, if you can. On the TEC report, I saw that we were beginning to use Facebook to advertise our programs. And oh, the first question is, is this only a TEC project, or are we trying to utilize that social media for our other departments and programs? And then, what do we, are our goal or our targets, Dane Marks, in regard to whether we think that this is successful or not? I mean, 724 likes sounded, you know, fairly good, but then when I saw there were, that was out of 15,000 to 70, to 37, I didn't know if that was really good or not. It didn't sound, I guess statistically, it doesn't sound too good.
Well, we're just getting started with it, in the, you know, roll stages of testing, and I think it'll take some time for us to look at, you know, trends, and if we can make some improvements with it. So, but we are getting word out, and we have, you know, received some enrollment, so just family information at this time, and hopefully that can bring me more statistics later.
So, but do you have strategic goals in mind, or?
Not at this time.
Not at this time?
No.
And Dr. Vitale, what about other programs, departments?
They can, I don't know if they work directly with BAS, hopefully on the Facebook, so that they're putting out a consistent message. BAS, do you have any? Yeah, use the mic.
Yes, y'all would please move to the podium, so we can broadcast.
There is an official Facebook account for KCKCC, however, each program has its own as well, and they promote the daily activities that they are conducting, like, they have an event that's taking place today, they would post it on Facebook for their fans to like, or to re-propagate and repost for their followers. And I'm looking at this Facebook, and this is not the only program that has its own Facebook account, but we also have that KCKCC main, which is basically used by all programs, and they post that through the Web Services Office at Information Services. And in the previous reports for the board, we provide statistical information about how many followers on Facebook, how many followers on Twitter, and so on and so forth. But, so there is a central account, Facebook, for KCKCC, and if we look from one report one month to the next, it is growing. I know it is not millions of followers, but I think it is fairly decent compared to other same-sized community colleges in the state of Kansas.
Okay, all right, thank you. Then, Dane Marks, another interesting piece of data was your night courses, went up significantly, but again, I was just interested in our strategic goal of that, do we want to look to continue the increase, are we going to expand our night course offerings? What's the thinking in regard to this?
We want to expand the night course offerings, just about all of the workforce programs. So they have them expanded here in place now, and this just started with the spring festival. So again, this is very new, and we'll be working towards that.
We want to expand all those workforce programs at night, take advantage of the new facility. Ultimately, we would like to see that building in use, and the police department may not like this, almost 24/7. I mean, obviously, there's maintenance and stuff that has to go on, but, you know, we'd really like to see, you know, not only a day program, but an evening program, and perhaps even a weekend program, so that, so that we're really making a use of that facility and providing the training at times when people who are working, and maybe not working the traditional, you know, times, have opportunities to do that.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. Thank you. And there was about the internships with Chevron. I didn't know if Dane could speak to that specifically, but I was interested, two students, and, you know, are you cognizant of their experiences?
I'm not sure if this thing's on or not. I guess it is, okay. The, there are two internships happening at Chevron this summer, there will be two more this fall. Basically, this is a new type of approach for Chevron, so what we, what we set up for those two students to do is, they were both students that were selected that are going into engineering, and they are working on projects, looking at how to bring back curriculum pieces from the Chevron data plans that they've done in terms of the work that's going on here, and also looking at the types of energy solutions that Chevron uses in a variety of their projects that are going on around the nation. They are also, I'm working with Chevron to bring, for lack of a better word, like a simulator, to the college... like a simulator to the college. It's going to be put at the TEC. And we were selecting that with Cliff's group in terms of something that would work best with, I believe we selected in the area of this construction group, okay? But it's a set of simulator that, that has a variety of things on alternative energies and on ways to better do building construction so it's energy efficient. And what the idea would be is that while that's housed at the tech so it could be used all the time, it would also have the ability to be brought up on main campus to be used in like physical science course or in a math class where you're wanting to show how you can collect data on different aspects and make this relevant. So, it's like a board, from best I could see from what we looked at, that's about the size of probably the screen there that you're utilizing. And that board has a variety of interfaces that are working on electronic interfaces so that they can see how these parts and solutions work and monitor what's happening with them in the simulation format.
Okay. Are both those students, first-year students, are we gonna have them a while or they?
These two students are not, because we chose students, well, actually, what, what we tried to do was we tried to choose students that are going into these programs in engineering. They are, they are going to be returning students next fall. But they had already completed a year of college with us at KC KCC. So these two students had Calc, one of them had Calc III, the other one had Calc II. And they're going to be back here for, I believe, a semester. I know for one of them for sure. And the other, I'm not sure how, if he's going to stay full year or just the fall semester. And my plan is to bring them before the board when they.
So do the, okay, when they go on to KU or wherever they go for, or K-State, because K-State has a good engineering school. But anyway, so do they, the, do the internship go there? Or will it, is it, if the student's not with us, what happens?
To my knowledge, their internship is one semester at Chevron. And whether they do any additional semesters would be between Chevron and them in terms of whether or not Chevron would, would like to offer them something in the future.
So that one semester, one semester, not a year, but one semester?
That internship for that, for those two students is for the summer semester only.
Summer only?
Yes. And there's going to be two.
So then it'd be some more following them?
There will be two interns, there will be two interns in the fall as well.
Okay, are they gonna be first-year students? That's what I'm.
I, I don't know, I don't, because we have it select. Yes, we do, but I doubt that they would be first-time students. Here's, here's the reasoning.
Okay.
These students are students that are going to, that are, that are choosing to go into something like engineering or a similar format of, of education, right? They need to have some level of competence, which they're going to get through having had like Calc I and Calc II, which is why we went to that class to select these first two interns. Now, after speaking to the two that finished, we'll know whether or not that was needed. And so, when we select the next two, we can pick them from the appropriate classes. That's why we chose them in that manner. I announced it, basically, I announced it to our entire division, asked our faculty to have students contact me that were interested in it, explain to them what the, what Chevron Energy Solutions were, was, and, and asked them to see me if they were interested in pursuing it. These two students were extremely excited. They came and saw me probably 10 times before I ever had a chance to have Chevron come in and, and set down the final process. But both of them are there. And so in the fall, again, we'll, we'll get with these two students, see how their experience, what, what they needed in terms of their skill sets, and then try to choose two students that would be good to go. Because again, if they just come right out of high school, let's say, and they're just starting out at the college campus, they don't necessarily have any basis to hang that on. And so, students generally change their major, for instance, probably about five times during the course of their undergraduate, and it's probably more than that now. So, students having, trying to choose the internship so that's an appropriate place for those students is an important part, I guess, is what we're trying to make sure of.
But Dean Kramer, you were reading my mind, because I encourage you to have the students come and do a, a small presentation about their experience.
Sure.
With us, because that was a very important aspect of our Chevron contract.
Right.
And so we want to make sure that they understand that we're following up.
Absolutely.
Continually, not just on the progress, of course, of the facility and that, but also the educational value that we felt was very significant to our purpose. One more question for you, the Summer Youth Computer Camp?
Yes.
How many students and where are these students, where are you recruiting the students from?
So actually, that, that program's in combination with workforce development. And it's happened for three years. Marissa Gray, I'm not sure, Marvin, where they select those students. But I know that there's, I, I know there's enough that they're offering the camp twice.
Twice, yeah, I saw that, two four-hour sessions.
And an afternoon section. They're going to cover computer repair and digital storytelling. But I, it's my understanding that these students are, oh.
There she is back there.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Marissa. Marissa can tell you exactly who, how they select those students, so.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Kramer.
Yes, thank you.
Those students are selected through workforce partnerships. So there's an application process. And six will, eight will come from Johnson County, eight from Leavenworth, and eight from our, the windout area. Due to funding, the, the grant itself has been cut back to only 24 students, so. But they are selected through an application process through workforce partnership.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dean Walker, has the ESOL department talked to you about concerns in the enrollment process for our, the students in that program? If you could, as this was brought up, I attended the, I guess you'd call it the graduation. And actually, the keynote speaker spoke of the challenges. And the reaction from the group was, well, I felt significant, so that's why I was bringing it up, because it was in part of your report, just number-wise. But I was wondering if you'd been in conversation with Dean McDowell or how this is being addressed?
Yes, sir. Number one, thank you for attending the ESOL, what, Ceremony of Complation, for lack of a better term. That's something we do every year. We feel it's important to mark, to mark milestones. And so the students that are recognized are those who fall into one of about three categories. They've either completed ESOL instruction or they've completed enough instruction that they've been advised to retake the placement assessment and then can, are clear to go into mainstream classes. As a matter of fact, I worked with one such young man this afternoon. And then thirdly, they complete the, the entire level of instruction of, one-up from wherever it is they tested in from. So that's, that's all, what all is encompassed in there. Now, Trustee Rios, to be perfectly honest, you have a slight advantage on me. I was not able to attend that ceremony this year. And I have, I have been promised a clip of the keynote speaker, but I haven't received it yet. So I have not seen her presentation, I don't know exactly what is involved in it. However, when we hired the new coordinator, Liz Holloway, three years ago. Yes, she'll be, she'll be tenured in this coming August. One of the things, of course, you know, the first year you come in, right? You just strap on, strap in and hang on. But then she and her other full-time associate, Elsha Schmidt, voluntarily came up with a schedule of summer hours. We don't have enough ESOL enrollment to sustain offering classes throughout the summer months. But, of course, you know, there's sometimes when you gotta strike while the iron's hot, right? And if they get, if people come in and they get turned away once, what are the odds they're going to come back or they're going to go? You know, it's not like there aren't other colleges offering ESOL classes in the Kansas City area. And that, they did that for a year. It made, it stabilized the ESOL enrollments significantly. And so the second year they did that, which was last summer, they added evening hours as well. Okay, the challenge is, depending on where these students are coming from, and they're coming from a myriad of places. Some of them are political refugees, some of them are, have been born here in the United States, but English isn't the primary language of the home, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You all know that as well as I do. But particularly when we're working with refugee populations or undocumented populations, it often takes multiple visits to campus to get all those Ts crossed and all those Is dotted and so on and so forth to be able to enroll. So we have modified the hours of summer staffing to accommodate that somewhat, which is to say that rather than having like one day a week or something, we publish this widely, it's on the website, it's distributed to El Centro and some other sympathetic locations throughout the community. Where they, the Liz or Elsha will come in like two days in a row. So you can, you know, okay, you come in for your initial consultation, you take your placement test, so on and so forth. Okay, oops, but you didn't bring your form X, Y, Z, 1, 2, 3. Well, great, go back and get it and come, we'll reconvene tomorrow. So that's the approach they're using now in an effort to expedite. It's not perfect, but we're, we're doing better.
Okay, all right, as long as it's in the works, thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, are there other questions or comments on Dr. Vitale's report?
I just have a quick, quick one. I just, Dr. Mann, I'm always trying to keep up with the acronyms and all that. Could you just tell me what KRS stands for and what SARAH stands for? You don't need to come up. I just, I try to keep up on all of it, I.
KRS is our reporting system, Kansas City, Kansas.
Reporting system that we use internally to send reports to various departments so that people can just, instead of asking us each time they need a report, they can just go in, in our system and open up a report. They can refresh it so that they can see the most of today's data. That's the system that we have, we call it KRS.
Okay.
SARAH is a state authorization of reverse agreement.
Oh, okay, okay.
When we have online students from outside of our state, we have to get an authorization from the state. For example, we have students from Missouri and we have to get an authorization from state of Missouri so that we can accept the students in our online program. Now, Kansas State is working on getting an approval so that we don't have to get an authorization from each state. If we join the SARAH, as soon as we join the SARAH, we already have a mutual reverse agreement with the states. That's what you call SARAH.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mann. Anything else to add, Dr. Vitale?
Uh, no.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
You want to make the motion?
I made the motion.
Oh, you made the motion, all right.
Seconding.
All right, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you, Dr. Vitale.
I did want to, I hadn't noticed it, but I did want to know if you liked the presentation for the grants that we did with the spreadsheet following the.
Yes, yes, good. Appreciate that, yes.
Okay. Will, will update that, each, each board report?
quarterly.
And, or quarterly or however, what, what seems appropriate.
Yeah.
That's good. Good information.
Okay, we are at Agenda Item Nine, Vice President for Administrative Services, Mr. Brian Bodie.
Thank you. My report begins on page 36, and I'll answer your questions. I would ask that you, on page 38, recognize Michael Kimbrough and Robin Torres. They won a Telly Award. And they had to come and show us what that was, but it is a very prestigious national award for their, their presentation of conversations. And they did the video that you saw today. We have a very talented video crew department here. And I would like to recognize them for their support to that and Robin for her hosting of that. So I did want to point that out specifically on the report, thank you.
Actually, I have, I have a question for the two of you, to the second bullet. What's the, these Phase I and Phase II classrooms? If you could.
Page 38.
Explain to me under, under Mr. Kimbrough's report, what, what that alludes to? And is there a way that those, I don't know, that there, an example of classroom in one of these phases could be, you know, played for us here at the board? So we actually could see the equipment in use?
I don't know, I don't know if we could bring it in.
Yeah, we can't bring it in, I think what the.
We could visit one, couldn't we?
Looking at them, it's, it's looking at, is how, how, how elaborate the technology is in that room. If I'm, I'm taking a guess there, Michael, that you're looking about whether you have a, a high-tech. Go ahead, Michael, you know, what you have available as a faculty member.
What we're trying, what we're trying to do is make all the classroom technically efficient. We have two type of classroom. One, a Phase I classroom, is a complete smart classroom with a smart board, document camera and so forth. So it can do everything technology-wise. The Phase II is basically.
You got them switched, but that's okay.
Well, I really didn't get them switched, the report is wrong.
Oh, okay.
The report is wrong.
Something was switched, all right.
So Phase II, Phase II is basically a, a LCD projector and a computer. And the ideal is that Phase I is where we want to go with total technology. And we're developing the, the Phase II classrooms so that all we have to do is add technology to them. So right now, I think we have 35, 35 Phase I classrooms at this point in time. So that's about half the classrooms are total technology. So now, we, we're trying to make sure that they're all the same type of projectors, all the same type of equipment. And then we could gradually build each classroom to that technology.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense, okay. What I was inquiring about, because I, we could visit the classrooms. I mean, in reality, I don't know how many of us really get to visit the classrooms in action or whether instructor really wants a trustee in there or just to observe. That's why I was wondering, with their permission, if we could be, I actually think of it as a marketing tool. If you can see the technology that we have in our classrooms and how it's utilized, how it is enhancing the educational experience that one acquires here at the Kansas City, Kansas Community College. So I was, that's what I was, if that was something that could be worked out to.
Of course, we could always put together a little presentation that, that, a short presentation just to show the functionality of the classrooms for you, if you would like.
I think that would be worthwhile.
Okay, we'll make that a project that we're working on.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else?
All right, thank you, Michael.
I'm not used to this position.
I know, all right. Back to the control panel. Any other question? Oh, yes, Trustee Maddox.
Vice President Bodie, what is the donation of the Meek family property?
Last month, you approved us accepting a property at.
Oh, okay.
And that is completed, that is our property now.
Okay, I didn't know it had a name. Thank you.
Those are the people that donated it.
Thank you.
Oh, Vice President, under the Dean Smith's report, talked about a leak in the roof on new facility. I was wondering, are we running into any other issues in our $25 million investment?
Yes, we've had issues in that. Yes, we've had issues in those. We've had leaked roofs that leak, and we're, they're under warranty, and they come and fix them. And we had an ice jam this winter that, that jammed up a drain, and the water ran in the wrong direction and ran into the building. Anything that is structurally wrong has been corrected. But, yes, we have, we have new house owner blues. We have a few things, enough electricity in one room. There's little things that we continue to have crews in the building working on.
We don't have any buyer's remorse though, right?
No, sir.
Okay, all right.
No, no.
Blues are acceptable remorse, no good.
All right.
Okay. Other questions for Brian? All right. I'm listening.
Move approval of Vice President's report.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you very much, Brian.
I'd ask for your approval under 10A of the payment of the bills, please.
Move approval, second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to pay the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
And then, the financial reports begin on page 165, and I ask your approval of the financial reports. I would like to call your attention, the highest electricity cost in the history of the reports that we have, 13 cents per kilowatt. Thirty percent increase from the month before. We had a great month, didn't use a lot of electricity, ended up paying about the same amount of money.
You know, it's always amazing to me, Brian, it seemed like when we lose, use less electricity, the rates go up. And so, we don't, when we use more, the rates kind of go down. Is there a-
The BPU is constantly encouraging us to lower rates.
Can I, can I explain? No, sir, I cannot explain the rate.
So, we always end up spending the same amount of money.
We look at it every month, and we, we've had at least six companies come through here on the premise that we weren't getting the right, the right bill from, from BPU, and that they would go out and go through all of our utility bills and save us money. Every one of them's given up because we are a preferred customer of BPU. We get their best rate. They have been open and honest with us. We always get the best rate that's available, but it wasn't, it isn't always the best news. It may be the best rate, it may not be the best news.
Thank you.
Wow. Approval of the recommendation.
Are you going to approve the financial report?
Oh, we got approval of the-
Other questions about the financial report?
Move approval of the financial report.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you, and I would ask your approval of the recommendations, 10C-1 through 10C-12.
Finance Committee has reviewed and recommends approval of the recommendations.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second to accept the recommendations, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Oh.
Could you hang on just one minute?
I'm sorry, hold on.
Yeah.
Well, we voted.
Talking on your recommendations, right, Brian?
Yeah.
I'd like to look at number E, or letter E, please, approving the operating budget.
We haven't got the D or E yet, sir.
You're going to go to there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll wait for you then.
On recommendation 10D, with a discussion and action, possible action on property casualty and liability insurance, and I had provided you on page 43 of your report, you got a short explanation of what was going on. As we went back to our local broker, who's been our broker here for years, and, and he went back to EMC Insurance Company, he challenged them to find out if they, in fact, wanted to lose another college, because they just lost Garden City. And this evening, at Cloud County Community College, there's a recommendation. EMC decided that they didn't want to lose anymore. They dropped their premium $50,000 that day and covered our police officers. The new numbers are within $6,300 of one another. And there are some added benefits to IMA, but there are some added benefits to EMC. And I think that as we went through this program, the likelihood of us having a claim in certain areas, the strength of the EMC insurance is better in the, in the areas where we think we have a likelihood, accidental insurance, uninsured motorist insurance and things like that. We think the EMC program remains stronger. John Bovard has been a good, solid provider for the college, and we would recommend that we continue with EMC insurance, and we do not change insurance companies.
Did you get the final bid, final bid from?
Well, we have EMC right now, and it doesn't go through, it, it, it does not expire until November 15th, and, but they lowered our premium $50,000.
Okay.
Could you go through and where there was obvious, well, all termed weaknesses in the EMC compared to the new carrier? Now, you say that they have corrected some of that, would you, if you could just articulate those corrections? Like property off-premise transit was not covered previously?
And it, and it has been covered. The critical one, IMA provides a billion-dollar limit on a, on a blanket limit for us, for our property. I don't know what is going to happen to the college for us to ever have a billion-dollar limit. It, but EMC did raise theirs up to $150 million to make sure everything was covered. EMC brought on law enforcement liability, computer fraud funding, violent events response, and added data compromise, which is not in the IMA proposal that we talked about that day, about, when we had the finance committee meeting, we talked about, do we have an issue with somebody compromising our data? BAS protects it very well, but if there is something, can we get a policy? EMC included that.
The interns, the internships?
And that does not include student nurses on either. So, we still are paying separate on both.
Okay. Professional learning student intern?
That one, we, I still don't know what professional learning student intern from, from IMA was. We're still working on that one.
Okay. And what it was, the limit given on the law enforcement professional, it wasn't covered previously, it was a million dollars.
It's a million dollars, and their, and their premium for that is $8,600.
Okay. All right, well, I covered my question.
I think critically important for us is, in the umbrella coverage for EMC, there is a uninsured package that we really do need, uninsured motorist package that we need. So, I would recommend that we take no action today. I would ask that you understand, we did explore this, we have looked through this. I know this is hot on presidents and trustees' agendas at all of your meetings, but currently, we are satisfied and happy with where we're at. I'll answer any more questions.
Okay, thank you.
And then, finally, on 10-
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry, yes, ma'am?
Okay. This includes everything but the law enforcement, all right?
Well, they added law enforcement, yes, ma'am.
Is that, but it says not covered?
Well, ma'am, it got updated between the day I had to send this to you and between today. In fact, it got updated yesterday evening about 5:00.
Okay, so, there's 249 is the current?
249 is not correct anymore, ma'am. It's 202. No, excuse me, it's 207, 719. And I am amazed with the penalty is 201, 564 for a difference of $6,155.
Okay.
They updated their policies.
All right.
It doesn't require any action today?
No, sir, just that you know, we did explore it, and, and we learned some things. We made our policies better. We got EMC's attention.
Good, good. Okay. Thank you.
And then, on 10, echo approval of the operating budget, and I had sent, it started on page 46, and there was a whole series of pages that went along with it. But, it was the operating budget as a result of the last meetings that we had, when we, we discussed what we were going to do with the budget at that time. It is still built on a flat mill levy. It includes a, and the items are listed there, flat mill, $7 per credit hour increase for adjunct pay per credit hour, $1,200 increase in salaries for full-time staff, 10 cents per hour increase, part-time wages, $5 per credit hour tuition increase effective with the spring semester, and then, all of the other things that we had talked to through the other two or three meetings have been included in here. The new people that were approved, and changes in the healthcare, and who was getting it, and things like that. And it comes out that we're just about breaking even. I do ask that we take, it is not the, it's not the formal budget for the college, I understand that. We have to bring that, we'll bring that at the July meeting, and that shows all the, all the expenses and everything. However, we would like to load the, the system with the 2015 operating budget.
I got another question there. I know we said we're going to do the per credit hour, and I understood that. Is the fees going to be raised too?
No, ma'am, that would only be the tuition.
Just the tuition?
Yes, ma'am.
Not the fees? Okay.
I want to address the tuition issue, because I want to make a, a motion for amendment, that instead of approval of $5 per credit hour tuition increase, that we authorize up to $5 an hour. I'm concerned that we lock in $5, we don't know whether we need $5. And this fall, we may decide we don't need 5, maybe we need 2, or maybe we need 3. So, I'd like to change that language to approval of a maximum of $5, and then we can make that decision on how much that should really be when we get final numbers from the city. So, I make that motion.
I'll second. All right, we have a motion in a second. Are there any questions? Trustees, everyone understand Dr. Daniels' approach?
No more than 5.
No more than 5.
Up to, right.
Is that the same?
Instead of saying we're going to go ahead and make it 5, we're saying we can make it up to 5. We don't have to go to 5, but we don't need to.
Can we print it like that? Can we print it like that?
Well, you're not printing-
You're not printing it anyway.
It's not the budget printing. What you're talking about is really a spending and operations issue. So, as I understand, Dr. Daniels, correct me if I'm wrong, this is up to contingent upon subsequent review and approval by the trustees. So, you're authorizing the administration now to plan for up to 5, but you anticipate there to be some justification before there's final action up to 5? And you're letting students know of the potential for the increase so they can plan, but you're not guaranteeing it. Now, am I close?
Yeah, that's correct. There's a possibility we don't need any of it.
That's right.
I mean, we may get, you're UG about assessment and so on, we may determine we don't need any increase. And if we put this in here now, we've locked the students into a $5 increase, we may not need it. That's my only point.
How can it be for the fall?
No, it's-
No, it's for the spring.
This would only be spring. Fall's already been set. This would be for spring.
Second semester, okay, I can see that.
What we were, what we were initially wanting to do, I think, as a, as a board, certainly Finance Committee, was to avoid a tax increase.
Correct.
And-
Where's Mr. Blen?
The only way to balance the budget then, we needed additional revenue, and so, it was to look at tuition. However, I do understand trustee Daniels', because we have said the assessed valuation would, will stay flat in this projected budget, because the county has not given us the assessed valuation.
Should be up this week.
So, if, in fact, it, it goes up, well, then that would mean additional revenue, and then the hope, as I'm hearing, well, maybe it doesn't have to be $5. Now, I would think that we're going to need something, but I think it'll, I think he's right, it may go up, and so, maybe $4 or something like that. So, it, the, so I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I do know for the, what I want to call, the workings of the machinery, whatever technical term I'm supposed to be using, BAS, to-
To load the-
To load up the schedule and so forth, because even though we're going to be in fall, this spring enrollment in all of our entities, and that actually gears up at the end of September. That does mean, though, we are still in June, there's this little window, but it will cause some, probably some hectic work, but I understand the intent of the-
Yeah, and I just point out again, I think just the third year, we've increased the tuition for our students, and, you know, I realize we're still very low around the state, but I don't think our goal is to be the highest. So, I think anything we can do to protect students and their tuition payment, I think we ought to do that. This still leaves us the option, option to do 5 if we need it, and we might, but if we don't, let's not, let's not charge the students anymore than we need to.
Okay. Hearing no other comments, then we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, carries.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Do we need another motion?
Let me find my place.
That was that one, that was that one question.
It was to amend the original recommendation, which you've done, and now you need to take action on the recommended- Yeah, so I move approval as amended.
Second.
Okay. It's been motioned and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right.
Thank you again.
Wraps it for us.
Thank you again.
All right. Find my place here electronically.
Human Resources.
Okay. We're at Agenda Item 11, miscellaneous calls for an executive session.
For the attorney-client privilege to protect communications which would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship, 15 minutes with action to follow.
Okay. I have a motion from trustee Townsend and a second from trustee Maddox. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, we will temporarily excuse ourselves-
Five-minute delay.
All right.
I move that the board comes back into session?
All right, got a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I move that the Board of Trustees authorize the Chairman of the Board and the President of the College to work out the final details of the Kansas City, Kansas Community College taking charge of the new Endowment Foundation, which is to commence Operation July 1, 2014.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second regarding the Endowment Association Foundation. Any comment or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries.
All right.
Okay.
Look forward to it. And that means that that motion was, they are authorized to work out whatever needs to happen with the Endowment Board, so there, you know, further action needed by the Board of Trustees.
Right.
If authorized. Okay. Now, let's see, that's the only, now we need to move back into executive session for a half hour. For a half hour.
Up to 30 minutes?
Up to 30 minutes.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. We'll be back. Make a motion, put us back in.
Move, motion, move back into session?
Second, all right, a motion, a second, go back in, open session, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, Agenda Item 12, Director of Human Resources, pinch hitter, Mr. Bodie.
Yes, ask for your information on separations under 12, 1 through 9, however, 7 is a duplicate of number 1.
Yes.
And then- And then ask for your approval of the recommendations from ten through eighty-four, with one caveat, please, on number nineteen and number twenty-two, those need to be pending the return of their final background check.
May move approval with the two pending item.
Okay, motion in a second to approve those recommendations, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then ask for your approval of recommendations eighty-five through ninety-five from the Continuing Education and Community Service Division.
So move, second. All right, a motion in a second on items eighty-five through ninety-five, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Ms. Coleman, thank you.
Motion carries. Report of committees, are there any committee reports?
They're better not.
I will just say briefly that Dr. Gibbons and I attended the annual slash quarterly KACC T meeting in Garden City on June the twelfth and thirteenth. It was a very productive meeting, I think. We talked about a legislative agenda, the presidents and the trustees drafted up a letter for the Board of Regents, that's moving forward. We're watching very closely what's happening with Dodge City and Fort Hays State University. I think it's something we all need to be concerned about. Some of the information that came out publicly was that this was sort of a merger, the way their board chair and number of their board members think of it is a hostile takeover and not a merger, and we need to watch very closely, we need to watch very carefully and, and see how that plays out at the Board of Regents and/or in the legislature. That's about all I want to say about that, other than we had a really nice drive and saw lots of cows and windmills.
And buffalo.
And we actually saw a herd of buffalo, too.
And lions.
Yeah, well, yeah, we, we did the zoo at Garden City, we did the zoo and-
You're saying lions?
And it's a drive-through zoo and, yeah, we did, we did see a couple lions and tigers and bears and, and it was an enormous buffalo.
I move for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You can spend the night, we're out of here.